...the closed session item once you open.
Sure. Good morning, thank you all for coming. Chairman Olivera is not in yet, so I will open the meeting. I would like to welcome you to the February 14th Board of Supervisors meeting, Valentine's Day. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody here. I hope you all have wonderful things planned for the evening. With no further ado, I will pass it to our clerk. Madam Clerk, will we listen to closed session?
The closed session agenda would be conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956. Dot nine, Z two.
Thank you. You're all welcome to stay in this room. The doors are remain open, we will exit to the back office. Public comment. Excuse me, is there a public comment?
On the closed session item.
Okay, we'll go. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming to the Board of Directors meeting for Calaveras County. We have to do just a couple of little quick items. Oh, we turned on the microphones. Okay. A little quick housekeeping items. Number one, the back rows on both sides are reserved for staff of the county, especially for today when we have a lot of folks coming in to make reports and presentations. The front row on this side is reserved for the press normally, but we're going to make an exception when we have a meeting like this with a large turnout, we're going to be able to put the press up here, as long as they behave themselves. Once again, we're not going to be entertaining any loud applauses. If you want to wave your hands, I can buy you that, that's not a problem. And I want to remind everybody that you are required by just being good people to give respect to the board, respect to the speakers, and respect to each other. And I'm going to do what I can to make sure that's followed. Okay, with that, we need to report out on our closed session. Conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, one case pursuant to Government Code Section 54956. Dot nine, subsection D, subsection two, board action was no action taken. I think we've got that. No, I'm going to do that right now. Pledge of Allegiance, would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance? CEO Lopez, you'd lead us to the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the name of the Constitution and justice
At this time, I believe, and I'm going to call on Supervisor Clapp, if you could make a presentation for me, please. This will be from the Board of Supervisors.
So this item is from the District Attorney to approve a proclamation recognizing February 2017 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month.
Good morning, Barbara Yuke, District Attorney. I'm also here with Kelly Cohen from the Crisis Center. Kathy Northington, Superintendent of Schools, wasn't able to be present, but this proclamation that we're requesting you accept today is on behalf of all of us, to declare February as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. It's been a nationally recognized month since 2010, and we are hopeful that we can start the discussion and bring out some awareness for teen dating violence, and that's going on in our community. National Resource Center on Domestic Violence says approximately 1.5 million teens nationally are victims of domestic violence and dating violence. And what goes along with that, and one of the main reasons we wanted to bring this to you is that parents, it's not something that parents really talk to their kids about. I think, you know, as parents, sometimes we think, oh, we don't want to talk to our kids about dating and what can happen, and it's one of those subjects that's real tough, it's a tough conversation to have. And because of that, a lot of times the kids don't know what to do, they don't realize it's wrong, what, some of the things that can happen, and they don't know what to do about it if it does happen. Kelly has some quotes and some specific examples that she wants to share with you from some of their clients. And I want to remind everybody that if this is happening to you, or if you know somebody it's happening to, you don't have to necessarily report it to law enforcement if you're not ready to. The Crisis Center will still help you, we still have resources in the community, and maybe someday, they are ready to report to law enforcement, but it's not required, there is still help, even if maybe it's something you're not ready to let the world know about, there is still help. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Good morning. This is actually the first time we've come before the board with a resolution for Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. Those of you who have been here in previous years know that I come with Barbara usually every year for Sexual Assault Awareness Month and Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we just haven't done the Teen Dating Violence Awareness, not because it's not important, but because it's not an issue that we're seeing a huge amount of people coming in for. And the problem with that is, they're not coming in because they're not reporting it. When I, I have staff that goes into the schools, they do a prevention program, it's a personal safety awareness program, they do talk about bullying, they do talk about Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and so what I asked them was, how come we're not seeing kids come forward? And the quote, one of my staff said they actually asked that question to some teens at Calaveras High, and the thing, the answer that struck me was, because when you tell an adult, they mess it up. So, I wish I could talk to the young lady that actually made that comment, because I want to know what that means. How are we messing it up, and how can we fix that? And I really would like to challenge everybody to start having those conversations, you know, if this was to happen to you in a dating relationship, how would you want me to respond? What do I need to do to get you to talk to me about it? And that, that might be the starting place. I have some packets for you that I'll hand out in a moment, but I wanted to tell you some national facts and then give you some quotes from some young people that are in our county. One in 10 high school students have been purposely hit, slapped, or physically hurt by a boyfriend or girlfriend. Youth victims of dating violence and rape are more likely to attempt suicide with their, than their non-abused peers. One in three adolescents in the United States experiences physical, emotional, sexual, or verbal abuse from a dating partner. Girls and young women ages 16 to 24 experience the highest rate of intimate partner violence. And one of the things that really strikes me is, when my staff are talking to the young men and young women that they're coming in contact with, a lot of the women, the young women especially, don't recognize teen dating violence as being something wrong because they're seeing domestic violence in their home. So it's perpetuating that cycle of violence that I have talked about year after year, and so for children that are raised in that kind of situation, this may seem like it's normal. And so that's why it's even more important that we start bringing awareness. The poster that I put down here, if it didn't fall, it's still up, that was actually made for me by the staff that go into the schools, and the quotes on there are from students. So I wanted to read, one, it was a 12th grade girl, this is a Calaveras High School student, "I was in a relationship with a very, very jealous and mean person. I tried to convince myself it was fine and normal." I think if the class, healthy relationships, which is what my staff goes into the school and does, makes you feel negative... It's all my positive energy, right?
You know, maybe we better take a couple of seconds and adjust the volume games on the microphones.
I'll pass these out.
Thank you very much for your patience.
You're welcome. Okay, so we were talking about this 12th grade girl, and basically she said, "I think if the class, healthy relationships, makes you feel negative, like guilty, if you're having a response to the information that, in a negative way, that makes you feel stressed out, there's probably a problem and you should get help. Telling someone can help you get out of a bad situation." I did. And this is a good example of somebody reaching out to a young person and educating them that this, this is not okay. She said she tried to make it normal. And that makes me wonder what kind of conversations are happening at home, what is she seeing at home? And so we know domestic violence is a problem in Calaveras County, and so this is just the next step down. And our kids is, kids are really where we can make a difference and start breaking these cycles of violence. So these awareness events, when the board talks about it, when the board approves a resolution, when we get up, get to get up here and say something, I think it helps to get that word out and hopefully, young people can get out of these relationships before they get too bad. In your packet, you have the statistics that I just read, there's a copy of our prevention newsletter that we do every month, and it goes out to schools and teachers, there's a flyer for our new Children's Counseling Advocacy Center, so kids that have these issues can go to this place and get free counseling, and then there's just some other, there's a whistle and some other fun kind of awareness items for you.
Notice that the flyer and the whistle, and that's some of the other materials are orange. Orange is the color for Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you. Supervisor Clapp?
Whereas teens dating violence is controlled abusive and aggressive behavior in romantic relationship and can include verbal, emotional, physical, and sexual abuse in persons or via social media. And whereas both boys and girls can be victims and perpetrators of teen dating violence, and whereas according to the National Council on Crime and Delinquents focus, one in three adolescent girls in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner. I figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth. And whereas according to the 2013 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, 13% of adolescent girls and over 7.4% adolescent boys suffer actual physical violence from a dating partner. And whereas according to the 2013 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, only 33% of teens in an abusive relationship ever tells anyone about the abuse. And whereas according to the National Resource Center on Domestic Violence, three of four parents have never talked to their children about this type of violence. And whereas high school students who experience teen dating violence are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, and are at greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry partners of abuse into future relationships. And whereas by providing young people with education on healthy relationships and relationship skills, and by changing social attitudes that accept and support violent teen dating violence can be prevented, and whereas everyone has a right to a safe and healthy relationship and to be free from abuse. Now therefore...
I entertain a motion to accept this proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call for a vote. Oh, I'm sorry, any public comment? Excellent. Call for a vote, indicate, well, I'm sorry, this crime?
I was wondering, but Marty, where's Marty? I tried to just say, let's get them a standing ovation, because they covered all the faces. But there's just one, and one of these things that, as a woman of 67 years old, I can say I've lived through a lot, way back in Ohio, one of the things we heard all the time, there were five girls and one boy in our family, and he was the golden child, and it, for the girls, it was, it's a man's world. That told us, doesn't matter what you have to say, so just sit down and be quiet, we'll take care of it. So that was one of the things we heard a lot, and just sit back and slow down and let those boys catch you, and let some man take care of you. That didn't work for me, I'm pretty sure we all know that, that didn't work for me. But what it does is it kind of lays the groundwork, and I don't know how many families, children have heard that, young girls as they're growing up, and young boys, but it kind of sets the stage for them to be fearful of saying, "I've got a voice." Well, ladies, gentlemen, we all have a voice, and we need, when you see these indicators that they talked about, the first time isn't necessarily a slap, it's a, it's a, hey, it's a, I got this, or, or you're going to do what I want you to do, kind of thing, it's a control issue. When you see that, have a plan. Know that when you start seeing that, your plan is to walk away and raise your voice. So you have a lot of allies out there, so don't be afraid to speak out. So applause.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, before the board. Call for a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed by saying no. Motion carried unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed, February 2017, Teen Date Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month throughout the county of Calaveras, the Board of Supervisors urges all citizens, agencies, and educators to promote awareness about teen dating violence and to work towards ending teen dating violence and empowering young people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in assessing the information, and support services they need.
Will you present the proclamation to our distinguished guests?
Thank you, and we're going to leave some of these flyers out here.
Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Now we're going to be going into our public comment period. There will be three minutes for each speaker, you can only speak once, and I see we're doing a great job of keeping everybody in orderly and keeping our fire chiefs happy with not blocking our aisle way.
Madam Clerk?
Public comment, any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the board supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of the comments to be heard.
Thank you. First person, first speaker.
Alice Montgomery, District Three, first of all, Happy Valentine's Day. Second of all, I want to acknowledge the people at first, that it's really more important that came before us, you know, it's not just women, it's men that are victims of violence. My son got holdcocked by a girl in high school, and he asked her, "Why did you hit me in the temple with your fist?" She said, "Well, I just really wanted your attention." He said, "Well, you've got it." He did not raise his hand. So what I'm here to talk to you about today is about four things. I'd like to urge you to extend the urgency ordinance for the maximum time allowable. I think that will give you as a board ample time to make...
That's on the agenda.
Ms. Montgomery, I believe that's an agendized item?
Oh, I'm not allowed to speak on that.
No, we can speak, public speak, public comment on the agendized item.
Thank you, and when does that happen?
It's going to come on, it's number 29, I believe.
It's at 5:00 p.m. tonight.
It could be. Thank you.
My name is Lisa, I live down in Valley Springs, and today happens to be 40-year anniversary of my domestic violence story as a teen. I believe this subject is really extremely important for children who are now teens, growing in Calaveras. It is something that is a real close thing to my family and myself personally, but also as a school bus driver for many years here, I saw the teens grow up in teen violence that did not have programs available to them, to be able to even discuss their home life teen violence. And now that we're at this point in 2017, to be able to, as a new Board of Supervisors, take a real hard look at what our teen generation is doing here in our school systems, in our neighborhoods, and look to the people that have been survivors of teen violence, and then now want to contribute to the betterment of my grandchildren and those children that are in my neighborhood, my community, my state, and my country. So I just thought today was a perfect day as my 40-year anniversary of a domestic violence issue that almost killed me. I broke my neck in a car accident from domestic violence, and I'm here to tell you I'm alive and speaking for my grandchildren who are now 10 and 12, going into families now of their own that have teen violence already existing in their lives, and I would like to help them and everyone else prevent. So I really believe it's important for us as a community to come to you as new supervisors to plead with you, to please take a hard look at these programs and open them up for our children here in Calaveras. Thank you.
Thank you.
Start at zero. Go ahead. Okay. Good morning, Board. My name is Bonnie Newman, I'm from Double Springs, and I'm here to give you one more little piece of the IHSS Home Care Program. And what you're going to be seeing today is what I have created as an organizational chart of the IHSS program. And this is intended to convince you how complicated this program is. There's so many agencies involved and so many funding sources that are fluctuating. And as I have created this about four or five years ago, I've had to update it on the amount of money that it's involved, because that's what I intended to do, is follow the money, find out where the money for this program is going. One of the things that I forgot was, we deal with not only the Board of Supervisors and the Welfare Department, but the administration, so I had to add them up there in the top left-hand corner. And then down at the bottom, I had to add the Sheriff's Department, because we spend about $5,000 a year in the Sheriff's Department getting fingerprint and background checks to convince the masses that we're reliable and trustworthy. What we've seen over the past 10 years is this program more than double, and that can probably be laid to the fact that the baby boomers are reaching age of maturity, and we're not dying. We're dying as fast as we can, but it's not keeping up with the programs and the services that are available for us. So we see resources stretched to the limits, for the services for elderly, handicapped, the sick, the injured, and the dying. That's what IHSS provides services for. So I put this out with anybody having any suggestions on, oh, this is not right, this is not the way this program is structured, for you to provide input if you indeed find that this program, I mean, this organizational chart is out of whack. I just have to say one thing, because I've got a few minutes. I call this chart spaghetti and meatballs. The meatballs are all these little circles, and the spaghetti is all the interaction that goes from one program to another, and I stopped with the spaghetti because there was so many lines, it would have obliterated the whole chart. Anyway, I thank you for your time, and I will be back when I have more to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's open the door. It's open. I don't know.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Bill Petrow, and I'm the Regional Director for SEIU 1021. We represent the general unit members here in Calaveras County, and I'm also a resident. I live in Murfrees. I've spoken many of times in front of the San Joaquin County Board of Supervisors, and things are kind of different there. My first time speaking here, so please forgive me if I don't follow your protocol. I was going to speak on the urgency ordinance, but I see that on your agenda, and that you'll be voting on that, and my hopes are that it will get extended. But the thing that's probably of a primary concern is, I've heard and read that you've instructed your staff to draft a cannabis ban of your own. And this would be a concern to the union and to myself as a county resident. The way things are in this county, there's not a lot of opportunity for increasing revenues. This industry, the industry of cultivation is, in my opinion, an excellent opportunity for just that. From everything I have heard, the community of cultivators is 100% in favor of regulation, does not seem to have any hesitation paying, but the voters in the county have seen fit in the way of fees and taxes. Benefits to law enforcement, the general fund, which provides the funding for the basic community safety net services, and to the community as a whole will be immense. To draft a ban would send the message that the Board of Supervisors are anti-revenue, anti-services, and anti-public safety. The prior board opened the door to legal cultivation, knowing that the industry would pay for its own policing, if you will. Much like myself, I have to believe they are trying to provide the basics for their families, and they want what everyone in this room wants, good schools, basic safety net services, and a safe community. Drafting a ban and/or not extending the urgency ordinance would go against all of that. Gentlemen, you have an immense responsibility to provide a safe community for all of the residents, regardless of where they live, regardless of what their opinions are on cannabis. Have responsibility to everybody for a safe community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I need a haircut. About a month and a half ago, a top-ranking county official asked me to come up with an alternative to the urgency ordinance, to a ban, and this particular person is actually in favor of a ban. At that point, I put together a committee of professionals, and we went to work. We're almost there, we're not quite ready to present this, but I will tell you this, it clears up the problems in residential neighborhoods, it clears up the bottleneck with the planning department, it gives the Sheriff's Department everything they need, and it's something that will work. We have been doing focus groups and talking to people inside and outside of the cannabis industry. We have another focus group coming up in a couple of days with people that traditionally would probably vote for a ban. We're also, there's still a lot of work to do, I still need to sit down with Sheriff Rick, who has agreed to sit down and work with us. I need to take this to some friends, representatives that I've worked with in the past at the California Police Chiefs Association, and with the Legal Cities. They're the ones that coordinated MRSA, which is the strictest regulations in the country. We're getting real close to presenting this to you, and what I'm asking you for is a date of March 14th, to have a 15-minute PowerPoint presentation, or to deliver that to you. And at that point, it won't be completely done, but it will be at a point where everyone should understand where we're coming from, what needs to happen, and this is strict enough that even, even a lot of the banners are going to like this. This answers a lot of problems. It's full of solutions, not questions. So I'm asking you now, can we have 15 minutes, March 14th, to do a PowerPoint presentation and present our regulation package?
This is public comment period.
It's public comment.
It's public comment. We'll address that later.
Can I ask you that question later on? Like, you know, in an hour or so?
Well, we'll address that on Board comments, probably.
That works for me. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm Bob Bowerman, District 5, relatively new to the county, only been here 16 years. And I want to thank each and every one of you for stepping up and doing what you do. Thank you very much. All the respect in the world to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowerman.
Marty Crane, District 5, Still. I tend to think that the universe brings to you a message that you need at the time when you need it, from time to time. And recently, something like that came along. And in the interest of us all finding our voices, I'd like to read this. The author is unknown, but it spoke to me, to my core, and so I just want to share that. "I am not a liberal snowflake. My feelings aren't fragile. My heart isn't bleeding. I am a badass believer in human rights. My toughness is in tenderness. My strength is in the service to others. There is nothing more fierce than formidable unconditional love. There is not a thing more courageous than compassion. But if my belief in equity, empathy, goodness, and love indeed make me, or people like me, snowflakes, then you should know, winter is coming." Thank you.
My name is Bill Wilson. I am District 1 voter. I have an estimate, actually written out, that I mentioned to the Board the last time when they were considering the ban initiative that's now on the ballot. Here's a copy for the Board. The other item I have is, when I spoke at the last board meeting, I mentioned that I was a veteran of the Vietnam-era war. Here's a copy of my DD 214. People in this audience have challenged the fact that I did serve. If any Board member would like to see it, I'd be happy to show it to them. Thank you.
Ben Stoppa, District 5, resident in Calaveras County for over 40 years. Grew up in Colme Hill, and last five years moved to District 5. Good Tuesday, Board. As many of you know, in the past, I have spoken critically of the urgency ordinance and its shortcomings for regulation. I then spoke critically of Measure D and of it being short of the urgency ordinance and its shortcomings. I now will speak towards the ban initiative, its shortcomings, and the financial peril which put our great Calaveras County in that some of our current Board members ran on. Mr. Toffnelli, thank you for the questions of County Council, although more could have been asked. It was sufficient to point out not the potential, but the reality of litigation the ban poses. Mr. Garimindi, thank you, sir, for asking for the assessment of cost to impose the ban. We need to let the people know not only the costs incurred, but the cost of returning, not 2.5 million, but possibly the whole 3.7 million in fees, loss of jobs, paying for these loss of jobs, and litigation that may follow. Mr. Olivera, Mr. Alferro, clarity, we know where you stand. Mr. Mills, sir, with your business experience, you need to let the people know how the county will pay for the ban initiative, or even a ban ordinance for that matter. As a man of math and science myself, for the life of me, I cannot make the loss of revenue to the point of deficit, along with no new revenue, add up to being able to pay for a ban in a county that has dipped into its reserves in deficit spending for nearly a decade now. Mr. Clapp, I don't have a lot of input on the issue from you, other than your comments pertaining to registered growers breaking the law, and you as a contractor working through the septic moratorium, and how you obeyed the law and have always obeyed the law when it came to code. Part of this is telling the truth. 527, 1999, illegal discharge of sewage. This is a public record that I found in the Superior Court that has Mr. Clapp's name on it, that has a conviction. So in light, moving forward with a ban, we need to tell the people the truth. We have to give them the numbers and make them understand, if you're going to impose a ban, we need to be able to pay for it. We need to do safety for our people. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Trevor Witke, District 2, also with Calaveras Cannabis Alliance. I'm here to talk about Measure C, and quite frankly, the Sheriff's Office desperately needs funding. There are other services in the county that also desperately need funding. We see Bonnie Newman coming up here every single meeting, requesting funding, speaking to the needs of IHS. The county is dramatically underfunded, and the only new revenue stream that we have coming in potentially this year is Measure C funds. This is why the Sheriff endorsed Measure C last November. It's why the county auditor endorsed Measure C and put their names on the ballot argument. There is broad consensus and support for Measure C and the need to bring this revenue into the county. Enforcement is tied to these tax revenues. We all know this. We heard the Sheriff say it at the study session. Without actual tax revenues to enforce against the bad actors, and by that I mean the non-compliant growers, the growers that are causing all of the unassociated costs to the General Fund, that are impacting the General Fund because they were engaging in criminal activities that are recurring expenses in the Sheriff Department and the DEA that were not associated with the fees from the actual application process. The only way we have any funding to address those unassociated costs that are impacting our General Fund is through Measure C. The only revenue to come in in the upcoming fiscal year is through Measure C. The math is very simple. We need Measure C. Growers want to pay. Fundamentally, we are willing to pay, and beyond that, even if there are growers that are unwilling to pay, a tax lien on their property is the most efficient way to deal with the problems of noncompliance. If we have noncompliant growers who refuse to pay their Measure C taxes, then they get a tax lien within 30 days, I believe, and that is going to be the fastest way to force them into compliance, because all of their economic transactions, all of their property will be frozen. They will no longer be able to buy and sell property, no longer be able to buy and sell cars. They will be essentially frozen out of any economic activity because of a tax lien. It is a very efficient mechanism, far better than trying to use asset forfeiture, which will incur all sorts of hurdles and barriers in litigation and will take a very long process. Fees and fines, we know, we're not collecting them. There's a 6% fee and fine recovery rate that's the same as we see over in Buke County. It doesn't work. Fees and fines will not solve our problem. We have to have taxes. Thank you, Board.
So that's 30 minutes. Any other speakers for public comment? Seeing none? None, per.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon in one, by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Anybody from the public wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
Number 10.
Mr. McManus?
Number 10, please.
Number 10. Anybody else from the public?
13.
I'm sorry, your name?
13.
13?
13.
Mr. Seale, 13. Last call for public agenda items on the consent agenda. Okay, we'll bring it back to the Board of Supervisors. Any Supervisor wish to pull an item? Supervisor Toponelli?
Items 7 and 8, please.
Items 7 and 8. Any other Board members, Board of Supervisors? Staff members, anybody wish to pull a consent agenda item? Okay, thank you very much. We have, 1, 2, 3, 4 items from the consent agenda that has been pulled. I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Also move it.
Consent agenda minus those four items.
Also move it.
Moved by Supervisor Clapp? Second by Supervisor Garimindi? We don't need public comment on that, do we? Would entertain, indicate your approval by saying aye for this motion.
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? 5-0. Thank you.
Okay. Item 7. Is the code compliance to adopt an ordinance adding Chapter 15.10 to the Calaveras County Code, adopting Public Resource Code Sections 4291 through 4299, defensible space requirements?
Good morning. Todd Bar with the Building Department, Code Compliance.
Yeah, Todd, I have a couple of questions on this item and item number eight. I know it came before the Board, and we consented without even reading of it to get to this point, to adopt this ordinance. But I did do some research on this. I went to the code, state code regulations, and read these regulations. And the concerns that I have on it is it talks about expanding the space around our homes or properties and buildings and such. But it states here, under financing, on both items, 7 and 8, says no cost to General Fund. This ordinance is associated with the building permit application, submittal, and issuance process currently in place with the Building Department. But when I read it, and I read the code, it pertains to, we adopt this, and we already have one in place, to everybody. It's not just when you get a permit. If you have a building, you're required to have a defensible space around your building, whether you're going to get a permit for a new building or not. Is that correct?
That is correct. You are required to have defensible space. That's normally enforced or addressed by CAL FIRE. But when you get a permit, what it triggers is not only defensible space, but the driveway requirements and some mitigation concerning driveways, turnarounds, hammerheads, so that fire equipment can maneuver better around the structures and defend the structures.
Okay, and so when you go, you're saying then, not, we're just addressing at the time you get a permit, not addressing that if there's a code violation or some other violation, someone goes out in the county inspection, finds that you don't have defensible space, that's up to CAL FIRE to go through that process?
Yes, that's a CAL FIRE or even positive, depending on what ordinance is in place in the Fire District. That would be their enforcement. It triggers, what a permit triggers is the initial construction and mitigation and access of those properties and the defensible space of those buildings. Thank you for clarifying.
That would go for both items 7 and 8 for me. I don't know if you want to reopen for 7, but if we have the same condition of both items, I just wanted to clarify that.
Excellent. Counsel, we can vote separately, or we can combine 7 and 8?
It's in the discretion of the Chair, as long as you provide or allow for public comment on both items.
All right. Any further comment from the Board? I'd open it up to public comment now. Any public comment regarding items 7 and 8 on the consent agenda? Seeing none? Bring it back. I would entertain a motion to combine and vote on items 7 and 8 in regards to Sections 4291 through 4299 and item 8, 4290 of the Firesafe Regulations Code.
So move.
Move by Supervisor Toponelli.
Second, please.
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying no? Motion carries 5-0 unanimously.
Okay, so moving to item 10, Public Health Services. To adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the fee schedule for the Medical Marijuana Identification Card Program, reducing the fee from $104 to $100 per application, effective November 8, 2016, and to authorize fee refunds to four individuals in the amount of $4 each in the amount not to exceed $16.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Kristen Brink, Health and Human Services Agency. The resolution that we are recommending is to, for your Board today, is to bring us into compliance with changes to the Health and Safety Code as a result of Proposition 64. It's a fairly routine item, but we welcome any questions or comments that may be associated with it.
Okay. Any questions from the Board from staff report?
I found it rather interesting that we can apply to the state legislature if we find that the costs exceed?
Yes, so when it comes to any fees, the fees cannot be higher than the amount necessary to carry out the duty. So years ago, when fees were set for the administration of the Medical Marijuana Identification Card Program, it was identified that $104 was the necessary amount per fee to cover administrative cost. With the passage of the law, that amount has been capped at $100, so we are simply bringing down that amount. We're choosing not to, or excuse me, we're making a recommendation not to move forward with trying to recoup that $4, as we're identifying that that's fairly immaterial. So that was our thinking. And in addition, the previous direction required us to submit a portion of that monies to the state. That has been done away with, and so we're kind of looking at it as a wash.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. McManus, your position, please.
I'm sorry?
Your turn at the mic, Bill.
Thank you. Bill McManus, Hanford Hill. In going over the registration card, we all know that there's nothing required as far as a registration card in Calaveras County or provided by state law. It was a voluntary program. As with most things that revolve around the cannabis industry, whether it's voluntary or not, regulation seems to be, or enforcement seems to be voluntary or compliance. What really struck me, though, is as we're going over all the costs that have been charged against the application fund, there's been some question as to how accurate it is. Yet in this case, with laser beam accuracy, we're down to within $4 of the cost of one action. What I don't know, and maybe staff can supply the information, how many of these cards have been issued, and has the price been variable, or did it recently change? Or is it possible that only four people have this card? That's why we're getting ready to refund $16. So my question would be, how widespread is this plan? Are there any more people that are going to be coming forward? Did they ask for their $4 back, or are we just giving it to them? Or did we come up and say we're not able to substantiate $104 for the card, but we are clear that we can back up the $100 cost? So those are questions for whoever, whatever department head is responsible for that. It's just questions that's never come up before. Just interesting information. Thank you.
County Council, could you comment on that as far as state statute compared to county ordinance or fees?
Typically with fees, we cannot charge more than the cost of providing the service. The Health and Safety Code was recently modified. It specifically indicates that in no event shall the amount of the fee charged by a county health department exceed $100 per application or renewal. So based on that change to the Health and Safety Code, the Health and Human Services Department is bringing this modification to the fee, based on that modification to the state code.
So we're in compliance with state code? So we're in compliance with state code, Health and Safety, California Health and Safety Code?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll bring it back to the Board for any further comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. So move. Motion by Supervisor Guaramendi, second please.
I'll second it.
Second by Supervisor Clapp? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously five zero.
So the next item is from the Administrative Office, to approve amendment two to the meet and hunt airport continuing services agreement in the amount of ten thousand dollars and authorize the county administrative officer to sign the amendment.
Okay, this was brought by Mr. Segala, Mr. Segala, your position?
Yes, good morning, I just wanted to know more information about this. What's the reason for the ten thousand dollars?
Do we have representative, uh, rep, from the airport to address that issue?
I don't see Kathy here.
I don't see any either. Maybe public, of course. We'll take a moment with Mr. Crowvis and Mr. Moss. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Brian Moss, Administrative Office. Apologize for delay. This is, uh, this item here is actually, uh, an ongoing contract, an ongoing agreement the county has with FAA, um, qualified engineers to do design products at the, at the airport, as well as to write grants and take care of other things that are required to go through FAA requirements. So that's what I have on this topic, I apologize in our staff report.
Comments from the Board?
Well, I know it improves upgrading taxiways to the new FAA requirements. There's, there's, there's a lot of physical work that needs to be done to bring us into current compliance, and that's, that's primarily what they're doing here.
Correct, and, 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 again, once again, we retain the, this, this, uh, this group, Meet and Hunt, for, on a continual basis, to meet those FAA requirements as we do improvements at the airport.
And they are familiar with the ongoing work.
Absolutely.
Thank you, any further Board comment? Now, Mr. Moss, I have a comment, this, this is somewhat, if you will, a maintenance program to be, to be.
Correct.
With our FAA requirements as they change.
Correct, so, so, um, I would, I would use this as an example, it's not on your staff report, but if, let's say we were going to do new above ground storage tank sites, our above ground storage tanks at the airport, and we didn't want a few years back, but as an example, if we're to do something like that and the engineering that is required, the design that's required, we need to make sure it meets FAA requirements. Also meets the environmental, local, environmental health requirements, which are really essentially the same, but, um, because it is jet fuel, et cetera, so.
Fifty-four thousand dollar question, is this in the airport's budget?
Yes.
Yes.
It is, it's a budgeted item. Thank you.
Yes, it's, again, we're just starting to exceed the amount, um, allowed under, under our current allocation, so if you have the funding, we just wanted to come to the Board to, to ratify that additional expenditure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public com, I'm sorry, any Board, any more Board comments? I'll take public comments on this, this agenda item. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Board, I would entertain a motion. So move.
Second.
Move by Supervisor Toponelli, uh, seconded by Supervisor Mills. All in favors indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying no? Hearing none, motion passes unanimously five zero. That will take us to our regular agenda, okay, I'm sorry. Ladies and gentlemen, let's take a ten minute break.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Oh, fif, I'm sorry, fifteen minute break for federal law. Okay, we're back in session?
Item seventeen is from the Administrative Office to receive a report from staff, Cal OES, FEMA, and local organizations regarding the ongoing Butte Fire recovery.
Good morning again, Brian Moss, Administrative Office, and this is the monthly report for Butte Fire recovery efforts in, uh, in the county. And, uh, I know that we have a few department heads here that are going to address the Board, everything probably from insurance issues to what's happening with the roads. So with that said, I will turn it over to the department heads unless somebody has a question on these specific points.
Thank you, Mr. Moss.
Thank you.
Good morning, Earl Seaberg, representing Public Works. Uh, Mr. Crowvis is working on something else right in the moment, so he'll be back shortly. Uh, I'm very pleased to report to you today that the hazardous tree removal started on January thirtieth. Uh, they commenced on the days that weren't raining. Uh, they've had six to twelve days where they could remove trees, they've taken out, over four hundred trees at this point, along Munk Ranch Road and Railroad Flat, those are the areas of immediate focus. Uh, that work will continue for the next several weeks on those two roads before they branch off and start doing some of the other roads. Right now, uh, the plan is is to start ramping up crews as the weather starts, when the weather becomes drier, uh, and hopefully help during the next several weeks. Uh, we do want to remind the public though that we need your patience. Uh, there will be traffic delays as they remove these trees throughout the area to keep both the crews safe as well as the traveling public. Please, there will be encounter of intermittent closures of the roads, and so we really ask that the public bring their patience, remain calm, and enjoy the view for, uh, the spring weathers as the place greens up. Finally, I'd like to thank the Board, uh, for their support. This is my last week with the county. Uh, I've come to the end of my allotted time under the Calveras rules, uh, and I thank the Board, the Administration, and the other departments, as well as Public Works for all their support in the last year to move this program forward. And I wish you much, much success in the future as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor.
I want to thank you very much for your work, I have a quick question on the roads. I know we've had long discussions about digging, uh, that we're going to be rebuilding a lot of them over the next several years, uh, you know, as we recover. Do Zuck County have a dig once policy in place, I know some other counties do, where if you dig up a road or replace it, you put in the infrastructure underneath it, even if it's, uh, not lit?
I'm not certain about Calveras County, I know there are other places that have this. Uh, however, the challenge becomes under the federal rules, uh, they will not pay for the veterans, uh, and that may be considered a veteran. The other thing that would trigger is additional work underneath the process, uh, the National Veteran Policy Act, because now you're doing ground disturbing activities as opposed to just surface activities.
Can you, can, if, if, it's all right, if, if you could reference me to what our current policy is in the future, maybe we could find some time to sit down. So I think that might be an interesting policy, not just in the Butte Fire area, but countywide, it's, uh, always more efficient to do it once and do it correctly.
Well, I certainly agree with that. Hate to tear up new, new structure in there, so.
I have a quick comment. Earl, for the folks that don't understand, you're on the retirement on first, so you're only allowed to work X number of hours per year.
That is correct.
Uh, thank you very much for the good job you've done, and would you be willing to come back next year?
Well, I'll never say never.
Thank you very much for your services.
Jeff Crowvitz, Public Works. I'd like to thank Earl Seaberg for the work that he's done, um, not only on the, uh, road repair for Butte Fire, but also on the hazardous tree removal for the Butte Fire. It's been a difficult program for us to get off the ground and get moving, and it is now moving, as we speak, trees are falling. So, um, we have a lot of issues associated with the program, but we will resolve those. With the treatment, the, uh, access to the Wallace Yard, among other, uh, issues that have been brought forward. A couple of other programs that I don't know if Mr. Seaberg mentioned, but, um, I have FEMA and Cal OES scheduled to come out next week on the FMAG and the HMGP to do preliminary, uh, NEPA investigation for the clearance on that project. I've got some ride of entries, um, as well as working with Amidore County to get that work started. And I'm sure that he talked briefly already about our two road recovery programs, the emergency recovery program through federal highways, as well as the, uh, public assistance roads through Federal Emergency Management Agency. He's already covered that. Any other questions on Butte Fire recovery?
That's right, I'm thinking of Mr. Crowvitz. We were just talking before you came in about a dig once policy, and that, well, under federal and state laws, as we, as we get reimbursed for building these roads, they don't do veterans, they build the roads in accordance to state-county codes, correct?
Well, we hope that's true, however, many of the roads that we have in the back country where the fire occurred were, um, organically developed. They started as a animal path, they moved to a people path, it moved to a wagon track, it moved to a paved road. And so, um, was there a county standard to which they were built to? No, many of these roads, no. And that has been one of the problems in terms of recovery, because FEMA only recovers to the condition it was prior to the disaster.
But certainly they wouldn't build a road that wasn't to code. They're not going to, if you've got a road that wasn't to standard before, and then you come in and you're going to rebuild it, you're going to build it correctly. You wouldn't build a inadequate road, because that would be a liability on everybody, right?
I would agree with that, um, to a certain point, however, uh, you know these roads better than I do. And, uh, um, not all of them were originally engineered and constructed to, um, what we would consider to be a current code. So, recovery, um, from fire damage is to recover from damage directly attributable to the fire and its recovery operations. And I know where you're going, and I want to go there with you, but I have to be careful. In that, we are not going to see additional funds or monies coming to us through this particular program that will pay to improve the engineering or the structural section or the width or the signage beyond what, A, was there prior to the fire, and B, what would be reasonable?
I certainly understand, and we've, as you and I have discussed this numerous times, I just, uh, I just want to confirm, I mean, we would not build a, a, a unsafe road.
Correct.
So if you could talk about the, um, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions?
I do have a question, has PG&E got to you with the data that you needed?
Um, in terms of the number of.
Axles, axles and weights and.
Not yet, I haven't received anything.
Okay.
And I sent out, uh, resent out copies of the letters that I sent in late twenty fifteen, so.
Okay, I'll follow up.
I sent letters to both PG&E and AT&amp;T, because they had large operations. If you'd like copies of those, let me know.
Please.
All right.
Mr. Crowvis, do you have any other issues other than the Butte Fire reporting?
Um, I do, but it will have to take it up under a separate cover. We need to talk today about, um, our local state of emergency due to extreme weather and storms of twenty seventeen, so when that comes up.
All right.
Any other, if there are no further questions on Butte Fire or Butte Fire recovery, thank you.
Any public comment on the Butte Fire reporting out?
Thank you so much for continuing the conversation on the big ones. I hear in the public, when they, uh, dig up the road and put in one line, it takes several months, and then a few months later they dig it up and put in something else and it takes several months, and we're all going, what's, what's this, can't we all get together? So thank you for bringing that conversation forward. And I was wondering if FEMA isn't going to pay for veterans? And is it possible that, um, I mean, I'd like to know how the other counties do it, if they have the big ones thing, so thank you for looking into that. But also, is it possible to just put out the word and say, hey, we're going to be fixing this road? You want something in here, come do it now? And then, I mean, in a systematic sense, so anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Do you have Mr. King? Mr. Knight, Mr. Knight?
Actually, additional department comment, Mel Knight, Environmental Management Agency. I want to update you on the progress of the burn debris, structural burn debris removal program. Uh, as a reminder to the Board and others, uh, following the Butte Fire, the state and federal agencies brought in a unique program of debris removal. And as a condition of that, the county is responsible for some administration, some of the program elements. Uh, one of those that's being implemented now will be that where they have actually done debris removal at properties, those properties that had homeowner's insurance will be invoiced for the amount of the insurance that's specifically related to debris removal. This reflects the fact that the federal requirement says that they cannot spend federal dollars where there are other resources available, so, so to avoid duplication of benefits, this is one of the program elements. Again, as a reminder, there are about eight hundred and fifty properties involved in this program, about half are thought to have the insurance, we're confirming some of those numbers now. Uh, that is in progress. Uh, contractor is on board, Tetra Tech, which the prior Board had approved the contract for. Uh, within the next week to ten days, we hope to be sending letters out to confirm insurance information. There'll be people available to assist, Supervisor Guaramendi, Public Information Officer and others have reviewed some of the documents or will be reviewing these prior to going out. And we hope to be available to provide all the assistance and support to make sure this is done in an effective and consistent manner. There will be opportunity for individual property owners to meet with individuals to express any issues, concerns, or get any details to relate to the program. Again, this is a very successful program, nearly half a billion, uh, pounds of potentially hazardous debris was removed for either recycling, reuse, or disposal. Very large program, very large dollar amount of spin on this. And, uh, we expect to, again, see that this will be brought to closure , uh, within hopefully the next eight to ten weeks. Any questions?
Supervisor Guaramendi?
Mr. Knight, I want to thank you very much for all the time that you've spent with me explaining this program. I think it's very important for people in the burn scar area, um, that, that they're notified about this. I think this is a bill that's a long time in coming, and most of us expected it, and many people probably forgot about it. Uh, it's not, uh, it's only related to their insurance and what they've, what their insurance is going to pay out for debris removal, and that's what the county will be asking for. So it's, it's, you know, we're behind, so hopefully people will understand this isn't a new bill, it's rather an old bill that's, we're a little late in getting, asking for, but we are going to ask for it. And so, uh, and if there are questions, I appreciate the openness that your office has had in dealing with individuals and individual claims. You have a large variety of insurance, people who had plenty of insurance, people who had minimal insurance, and people who had no insurance. And, uh, and I appreciate your willingness to be compassionate and understanding and working through this and, and starting with me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the Board, any further questions? Any public comment on staff report?
Sharon Torrance, Public Information Officer, Butte Fire Recovery. I've been working closely with both Mel and Earl and Jeff, um, Crowvitz, on, um, tree removal and the insurance recovery piece. On the first of February, uh, I put together a media event. We had Channel thirteen come out and, um, both Phillips and Jordan and Tetra Tech explained their piece, um, what they did and how, they did a, a, a safety review. Um, we took them out on site and they actually got to see what it took to take one tree down. Uh, they were very impressed, um, I think everyone there was impressed with exactly what goes into taking those, those trees down. It's, uh, just not cutting down a tree, it, um, there's so much more that goes along with it. Channel thirteen did a great piece for us that evening. I have a link to that if any of you want to see it, if you haven't seen it already. Things have gotten very busy in my office with all, all the activity. So, um, trying to keep up with our Facebook page and, uh, county website and the Butte Fire Recovery page. We have gained a lot of viewers, I've been putting out information on weather, related to the burn scar. I've been putting out information on weather related to the burn scar and also the rest of the county as far as roads go. That's where I am. Any questions?
P, I owe Sharon... Sharon, I'm sorry. Is there any way that we can bring our numbers from our Facebook page and our website page to the board next time?
Yes.
To indicate what type of hits and what type of people are reading our articles? What's very important was today's social media seemed a preferred way to communicate. And I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
The county's done a good job, but we always have room for improvement. And I'd like to see what kind of numbers we're getting and track that.
You bet.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other staff report regarding item number 17, Butte Fire?
Thank you.
Any board comments? Okay. Madam Clerk?
Item 18 is from the Administrative Office to approve an agreement between the County of Calaveras and Aspen Street Architects Incorporated in the amount of $57,750, and authorize the county administrative officer to sign the agreement and subsequent documents to design needed changes to the legal administrative building.
Mr. Chairman, County Administrative Office would like this item removed from today's agenda for consideration at a future date.
Thank you, CIO Lopez. Is there any board comment on that?
No objection.
I would grant that request. Madam Clerk?
Item 19 is from Human Resources to adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the position control list by reclassifying an existing senior administrative analyst position to a principal administrative analyst position in the Administrative Department.
Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. Good morning, Chair, Board Supervisors. I am asking for you to adopt a resolution authorizing the change. We are asking to reclass the senior administrative analyst to the principal administrative analyst with the resignation of our CIO, Shirley Ryan. Shirley came up through the administrative office. First, she was the principal analyst, then she was the assistant CIO, and then became the CIO. And so, she possessed the fiscal knowledge in this county by working through... In fiscal positions for 26 years. With the loss of that knowledge and then with the resignation of our senior analyst, we no longer have anyone in the office with that level of experience. We did a recruitment for the senior analyst. We did not... We had the recruitment out there for three weeks. We did not have anyone who met the MCues of the position. We feel that with the needs of the department, the level of experience that we need, we do need to reclass this position to a principal analyst.
Thank you. Appreciate your help. Any comments from the board?
Ms. Hawkins, would this position also involve participating and writing grants or administering grants?
With the attached job description, we do have that on there, and I believe...
Page 168? Or, yeah, 168 of the packet.
And I do believe that it is assisting in those.
Assisting?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other board comments? Any comments from the public? Bring it back to the board. I have one question. Has this increase been budgeted for? Or is the budget able to support this type of movement from this position? I notice there's a $16,000-plus increase for this job change. Is that correct?
It is about a $4-an-hour difference in the position. So, this one is more about an $8,000-a-year difference. And this was a recommendation from our interim CIO. So, I believe this is something that they have considered in their budget.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, because of the vacancy of Ms. Ryan as well as the vacancy of Mary Rose, there are sufficient salary savings for this increase, even if we were to bring the position in next week, and we won't be able to do that. But there is salary savings sufficient for that.
Thank you very much, CIO Lopez. Bring it back to the board. Any further questions? Want to entertain a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Supervisor Clapp.
Okay, I'll take that.
Second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills.
Well, it worked out.
All in favor? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? By indicating by saying no. No-no's. This motion carries unanimously 5-0. Thank you.
Item 20 is from the Human Resources Department, asking to allow Human Resources to recruit for the position of building official by ending the recruiting contract with Bob Murray and Associates, as well as reboot the building official compensation.
Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. We are asking to end the contract with Bob Murray and Associates for the recruitment of the building official. At the time that it was decided by the Board of Supervisors to have a search firm recruit for that position, we did not have a recruiter in the Human Resources Office. We were very limited in resources, and so we felt that it would help speed up the process. It has been almost a year. We have not had a viable candidate yet through that service. Now that I do have a strong recruiter in my office, I feel my office could do a very good job to recruit for this position. I honestly do feel very strongly that I feel the board, or I asked the board, that you have me bring it back to you, change the position control list to increase the salary of this position to $116,000 annually. In doing a research, and I have discussed this with the board previously, what we are paying the building official currently is more of a mid-level manager. This position, at one time, the building department was part of a CDA, and so the building official was a mid-manager position. When that structure was changed and the building official was made an appointed department head, the position was not... The salary was not comparable to an appointed position. And so, we feel that we would have a more successful recruitment if we were paying the position more in line with those out there.
Ms. Hawkins? Any comments from the board?
We got a couple of questions.
Supervisor Tofanelli?
What is the current amount of the contract with the recruiting contract?
We... The contract was $26,000. And we have spent $24,000 on the contract.
And we're gonna... You're offering to bring it back in-house now?
And I want to bring it back before we spend any...
And then, the next question I have is, we currently are under contract with a provider for the current position of head department of the building department. Is that correct?
Right.
How much is that contract annually?
It was a... The terms of the contract was a certain amount upfront for them to post the job, to build the flyer, to go out and do the...
I'm sorry. I'm talking about the department head now that's currently in the building department, head of the building department. He's under contract. Is that not correct?
Yes. We can end that contract at any time.
Yes, we can. But what is the amount of that contract?
Currently, I believe we are paying an hourly rate, which I do not have it in front of me, but I think it's close to about $140 an hour.
$140 an hour? Okay.
He is not in the office full-time. He is only in about two days a week currently.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
So, I agree to recommend to come back with an adjustment to that control list and the appropriate salary change that you're looking for. How we've handled it so far in the budget has been very tenuous at best, as is the results, because that position really needs to be a full-time position to get the success that we need out of it. So, I thank you for having the ability in-house to handle it.
I agree that we do need a person in there full-time.
Any further? Ms. Hawkins, I have a couple of questions. What is the current compensation for that position under our local guidelines?
Currently, it's $96,636 annually. And we are asking to bring it back to $116,000 annually, which is comparable to what the planning director makes. And when we look at the size of staff and the... Especially the additional duties that has been added to the building department, the duties are comparable.
Do we have any indicators, maybe from our recruiting contractor, of why we had so little response, if any?
Salary has been the number one, and they felt that if we had increased the salary, we would have a completely different pool of applicants.
Did they mention any other areas other than salary compensation?
That has been the number one.
Did they mention any other areas? I know number one was salary. Was there anything else?
The number... One of the difficulties is that with the economy improving, building has started again. And so, just those in the building officials are hard to come by. We have a lot of other county cities recruiting. And so, there is a deficit of talent out there. And so, pay is really the major... The major contributor of not finding an official.
Okay. Thank you. Public comment on this? Seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. Want to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Supervisor Tofanelli. I hear a second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Mills. Call for a vote. Indicate by saying aye in favor of the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Hearing none, motion passes 5-0 unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Madam Clerk?
Item 21 is from Public Works, to authorize the Department of Public Works to reimburse Caltrans for funds expended by the Public Works Department for design costs associated with the suspension of two bridge replacement projects in the capital improvement program in the amount of $51,783.77.
Thank you, Clerk.
Jeff Crowitz, Public Works Director, Public Works Department. Since we have a new board, I'm gonna back up a little bit, and then we'll go forward. Back in, I think it was 2008 or 2009, the former Public Works Director programmed a number of bridges on county roads that met the definition of national highway bridges and programmed them for replacement as either being functionally obsolete, not wide enough on two, tight of a curve, not having sufficient railings, that kind of thing, or structurally deficient, meaning that they couldn't handle a standard traffic load under the Highway Bridge Program. At the time, the Public Works Department took on, I think, about 17 or 18 bridges under that program, with capital replacement costs closing in on about $80 million. One of those bridges was the O'Burn's Ferry Bridge, which is quite an expensive bridge that is either in need of retrofit or replacement. Public Works Department has been working as hard as they can and struggling to stay on top of these, because each one of these bridge replacement projects has a timeline. It has a timeline to be able to get through preliminary engineering and environmental document, 10 years. And that sounds like a lot of time. However, if one runs into acquisition of right-of-way, which can occur prior to an environmental document, and then when doing an environmental document runs into archaeological resources, cultural resources, historical resources, endangered species, the 10 years goes very quickly. The two bridges that are up before you right now were presented to the board last summer, saying that we hadn't gotten very far beyond the initial programming and getting permission to be able to go out to consult a contract for the environmental document, the preliminary engineering. And they were already seven years into the program. The likelihood of these two bridges running into environmental complications is high. As one is crossing Angels Creek, that's the Rollary Pass Bridge, and the other, of course, crossing San Domingo Creek, was high. And our thinking was that we were so far behind, we would not be able to catch up in time. And so, the expenditure of additional funds that might have to be reimbursed if Caltrans and federal highways invoke the 10-year rule for not having reached a milestone was too great. So, we brought these two bridges in front of the board last summer to de-obligate. It doesn't mean that they're not still obligatable or that we can't bring them back into the HBP program. As long as they continue to be structurally deficient, and that would be for a full truckload, we can bring them back to the program in the future. Very little work was done on the Rollary Bridge, and some work was done on the San Domingo Bridge. The money that was expended by Public Works to initially program these two bridges is the majority of the cost. So, the county owes that back to Caltrans for the de-obligation and pulling these out of the program and preserving them for the future. So, we are planning on... And what this board item does is to reimburse Caltrans for the money that was paid to Public Works to reimburse us for salaries of employees working on these bridges. I know this is not a good thing, and it's not a happy thing, but I believe that it's necessary, given the other constraints, both in terms of fiscal and human resources that we have on the department and the number of disasters that we're currently facing. So, what this board package asks you to do is to approve the reimbursement of Caltrans, to Caltrans, of money approximately $20,000 for the San Domingo Bridge and approximately $31,000 for the Rollary Bridge that were previously expended to get them into the program. Questions on these two bridges?
My question would be to... What is the impact of the RSTP budget as a result of doing this?
The RSTP budget... We're currently... I mean, obviously, the RSTP is going down annually.
It's just a rough number.
It has been for the last eight years. There's currently about $550,000 to $600,000 in either unclaimed from two years ago and then last year that are in that budget.
Okay.
So, this would be a hit to that budget. And... But it would be a smaller hit than if we continued to pursue these and spent more money without reaching the required milestone in time.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other board member have any questions or comments? I bring it open to public comment?
Just one quick question. Is this $51,000, is that in the general fund right now? And it's got to come out of the general fund? Okay. Where is it at and where?
It's in the RSTP budget.
Any further public comment? I'll bring it back to the board then. I'll entertain a motion on item number 21.
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Mills.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Clapp. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed, by saying no. Motion carries 5-0 unanimously.
Item 22 is from the probation department, to approve capital equipment expense for a vehicle partition and two radios for two new probation department vehicles. This requires a four-fifth vote to approve the budget transfer.
Good morning, members of the board. Sam Lee, Chief Probation Officer. I'll be extremely brief today. This... Just for clarification, these are purchases that I have had already authorized and purchased, and then we have not paid the bill. The reason for that is because, in my understanding, these were under $10,000 purchases that I needed for the administration of our duties. I authorized the purchase, and then we weren't able to pay. So, I did not view it as a capital improvement, because to me, it didn't qualify to what the county code was. I believe that... I believe that the interpretation from the auditor was that because the vehicles we purchased are over that ten thousand dollar limit, and these are going inside of those vehicles, that they've been out. So, that's why I am now here. And my understanding, I think that's how the sheriff has tended to purchase them in one route, whereas we purchased the vehicles and then later went to add the radios and the cage for the partition. So, the total's a little over three thousand dollars. We are asking, or I put it on the full agenda because we're asking to do a transfer with the SB six-seven-eight revenue so that there's no county general fund impact. It's a state revenue. And with that, I'll be available to answer.
Any questions, comments from the board for Mr. Leach?
Sounds like it's just trying to understand the system.
Yeah, I, I do have a question, Mr. Leach. These are the first vehicles you've purchased for the probation department since you've taken office there?
These are the first vehicles I have purchased, yes.
I have a question for Sheriff Devasilio.
Sorry, Greg. Thank you.
Good morning.
You could have stayed.
Good morning, Sheriff, how are you?
You could have stayed home.
Sheriff, when we purchase vehicles for the sheriff's department, which we have a lot of experience, do we budget out those items for the vehicle? Because I know there's, there's purchased under what's called a police package, if you will. And is there a separate budget for the addition of radios, computers, things of stuff that are placed in the vehicle after we receive them through independent contractors?
Yes.
So, that's a separate budgeted item?
It is.
Has to be, okay. So, basically, Mr. Leach here is on solid ground, I understand, it looks like. I just want to make sure. Thank you, Sheriff.
Sure. You'll be welcome.
Any question, any further questions from the board? I'll open it up to public comment. Any public comment on this issue? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. I want to make one, one, one more comment. Ladies and gentlemen, we need radios in cars. Tin string, tin cans and strings don't go that far in this county. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. All right, Supervisor Clapp moves. Supervisor Tofanelli seconds. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying no. Motion carries five-zero unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Leach.
Item twenty-three is from Code Compliance to introduce and waive reading of the ordinance superseding and replacing the current Chapter eight dot oh-six of the Calders County Code, Public Abatement, Property Maintenance Code.
Morning, Mike Renner, Building Department. So, this is Part Two of the eight oh-six. We're directed by the board to bring back a bit of a hybrid system, leaving, leaving standard quote-unquote code enforcement issues kind of alone even how they are. So, the board's the ultimate authority for any appeals. Part Two being specific to expedited abatement system for cannabis-related activities. So, what you have before you, I guess there's, there's a few main points. Number one, it's much, it's much faster while still providing due process to alleged offenders. It'll allow us to get from violation citation to hearing very quickly. So, especially with something like cannabis that's a time-sensitive thing. So, that's a, it's going to be helpful for the county. So, we have a bit of, this is going to change a bit. There's going to be a tremendous amount of upfront work and cost involved here. Basically, the second you get your notice of violation, that notice of violation also includes your hearing date. So, the day a notice of violation is posed, is posted, the staff will have to prepare a full staff report for each and every violation. That's going to cause a bit of time upfront. But on the back end, basically what'll happen is we'll turn to a bit of an abatement mill, and it'll just go and go and go. If there's a nuisance, it gets abated. Nuisance gets abated instead of the, there's a nuisance, let's wait ninety days, let three appeals lapse, and we're in the same boat we are now. I'm going to bring Ethan Turner up in County Council Office. He can speak a little bit more on some of the specifics before we open it up to questions.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. I'm Ethan Turner. I represent Code Compliance with reference to all marijuana-related activities. As Mike indicated, this new eight point oh-six has two components. The first is ordinary code compliance violations. And those are dealt with through the ordinary administrative hearing board process. Currently, the Planning Commission accesses the hearing board. And in those instances, a notice of violation is issued. The cited person has an opportunity to appeal. Their hearing is scheduled, and they get to have their day in court. And then, the hearing board then makes a recommendation based on the findings of that hearing, which are then sent to you for approval. With respect to marijuana-related issues, the new eight point oh-six delegates all of your quasi-judicial authority to administrative hearing officer. That means that the administrative findings and orders of that hearing officer are final. And if there's going to be an appeal of that order, it has to go to Superior Court. So, what, what happened is a notice of violation, citation, order for abatement, and hearing are provided to the individual who cited, who has an illegal cannabis cultivation site. That, that notice gives them a hearing date. It gives code enforcement total control of their calendar. So, they can choreograph abatement actions well in advance. So, the, the, the cultivator is given an appeal date, sixteen days for their notice of violation. So, they don't, aren't told they have an opportunity to appeal. It's, their appeal is show up or, or have the hearing officer issue an order based only on the presentations made by staff. The only time that an abatement order could not go out sixteen to eighteen days after a notice of violation is issued is if the appellant for good cause shown wants to get another ten days. So, in those events, the, it's possible that, that an abatement order wouldn't go out for twenty-six to twenty-eight days after the notice of violation. So, this would allow a much, much, much more speedy abatements. I mean, and as Mike, Mike called it an abatement order mill. And that's effectively what it could be. Because as was mentioned the last time we discussed this, the county is aware of many, many illegal cultivation sites and historical cultivation sites. So, we'd be able to basically go out and serve notices of violations, citations, orders to obey, and hearings to all of these sites, and just schedule a tremendous number of hearings and then issue immediately thereafter a tremendous order, a number of abatement orders. And at that time, at that point, it becomes a manpower issue. And I've been talking to the marijuana enforcement team and to Rick about how we could resolve some of those issues. On paper, I mean, we could issue an unbelievable number of abatement orders, hundreds. And, and I got all excited about that and told Rick that we, you know, we could engage in the largest eradication program in American history. And he, he looked at me and said, whatever you're smoking, it must be pretty good stuff because the, there's going to be manpower issues. But it will still offer an opportunity for the sheriff to work in concert with code enforcement to engage in a tremendous number of eradications. And because we could have total control of the calendar, it would, it would allow us to plan well in advance so that such manpower problems could be addressed even months before we know that eradication orders are going to be issued. And Rick, did you want to speak on this, or did you? Okay. And, and that's about all I have for that part of it. If you guys have any questions about either the ordinary code enforcement part of it or the marijuana enforcement part of it, I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Board, any questions, comments? Supervisor Mills?
Thank you, Ethan, for your presentation. My, my thought is, is that how many trips are we doing now? And if you incorporate what you're going to plan to do here, how many trips would it require to bring compliance to even the worst-case scenario?
Well, okay, by trips, do you mean visits for inspections?
Visits for inspections, that's correct.
Okay, yeah. And you've personally attended a number of the appeals and are aware of some of the problems that code enforcement has had in that regard. That, the, we've streamlined that to the, and we're going to streamline it even further. Some of it's in the works, so I can't really talk about it. But the main issue is that we want to make as few inspections as possible. And in theory, and what is something we need to have done is that by the time we begin what this eradication program I'm talking about, is my hope that we will have all inspections done. And, and that as this eradication program begins, it will be a matter of simply serving, posting, and mailing notices of violations. And that that would hopefully be one trip, once the enforcement part of it starts to occur. But your point is well-taken regarding the number of take, of trips that it can sometimes take as, as the, as far as inspections are going.
Yeah, and then there's cost recovery with it for the manpower that you're using.
Exactly. And with the, with abatements, they, those can be the subject of links, high priority links. So, that should be recoverable. I mean, because all administrative citations, enforcements, and adjudication of enforcements can be charged to the fee program.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Supervisor, you're amended?
Thank you very much. I, I like this change. I think anytime we can speed things up in a bureaucracy, it's a good thing. My questions are for Mr. Renner, and I apologize, I have a lot of them, but I was up late last night, and this sort of got me in a loop. So, how many code enforcement officers do we currently have?
Six.
And how many are funded by the urgency ordinance?
There are two positions that are one hundred percent fully funded by the UO funds. However, in reality, the additional four officers throughout the, the grow season, minimum of fifty percent of their time. So, for all intents and purposes, there's four full-time positions, if you want to just do the hard math.
So, you've got, you know, what happens to those positions if we don't have their insurance? Do we have money to continue to keep?
Two of them outright go away right now. And without the funding from the UO, there's absolutely zero possibility that I can keep up on a fraction of these issues.
Once you identify a site as being non-compliant, how long's the current process take soup to nuts?
Soup to nuts, including appeals, seen to take as long as three months.
And under this new process, how long do you think it will take soup to nuts?
Seventeen-ish days.
Seventeen days.
The day, the difference is, again, and I want to, I want to be clear to the board and also to the public, that due process is not being infringed upon. You still have your, your rights, there's appeal, et cetera. It's just, it's not appeal after appeal, board after board. The page, the hearing officer would be the ultimate authority.
So, if we got this underway now, and you guys had time to plan, it would be much less opportunity for people to game the system as we saw last fall?
Oh, a hundred percent, absolutely, absolutely.
Assuming, you know, you find these folks and, you know, we cite them, and they get, they get in trouble. They're non-compliant growers, and they abandon their sites because they're not allowed to grow there. How do we clean, how do we pay for cleaning it up? And who does that work?
Clean up an abandoned site?
Yeah. The guys who just walk away?
Generally, it'd be a lean on property. They would pay for, pay for the payment cost. And when the property changed hands or the tax law came around.
Would that be paid, can that clean-up be paid for by urgency ordinance, please?
Absolutely. That's directly tied to cultivation marijuana.
And I imagine there's a lot of hazardous materials in that abandoned site. I should probably ask Mr. Knight to come forward.
Thank you. Mel Knight, Environmental Management Agency. Yes, indeed, under the COOPA program, delegated authority by the state agencies, we do have authority for hazardous materials and hazardous waste. And indeed, what we would first do would be to work in concert with code enforcement as we do the seat of the traditional cleanup. It turned out, though, there was an imminent substantial public health endangerment or threat to the environment. We would then kick into additional activity possibly involving state agencies as well as state funding to deal with whatever appropriate removals are necessary.
And can we pay for these cleanups using urgency ordinance funds?
I'm not certain as to what the limitations of those ordinance funds are. There may be additional funding. For instance, the hazardous materials cleanups could involve sums that actually are very, very high. That's where we would then turn to state agency funds that exist for these type of cleanups.
How many, how many employees work environmental help that are paid for through urgency ordinance funding?
Environmental management now, we have one full-time employee working specifically on cannabis. We have some part-time activity by three other. So, we probably have the equivalent of one and a half to two FTE currently. We have authority for additional, although, as I mentioned to you aboard in the past, very difficult to recruit a specialized credential individual when we have such uncertainty as to the future of that position. And so, we're looking to actually contract for additional help in those areas.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Knight. This is kind of a, maybe a question for the sheriff. Sorry. It's kind of like mass, up, down, up, down, right? Sheriff, how's this new process going to work with your department? We've got code enforcement with this new tool. We've got environmental health. How's it work with SO's office?
Well, we're kind of at hand with them. We're still back to the problem of not having the staffing to, to do all of that along with everything else that's, that's going on with the urgency ordinance and the marijuana in general.
When you, earlier, Attorney mentioned that we can, using this program, we could execute the largest marijuana eradication program, in his words, in the, in the history of the United States. That's a pretty big goal. I want to ask you to say if we can do that, but can we do big things?
We can definitely do a lot more than what we're doing right now because the process will be expedited quite a bit.
How many officers do you have that are paid for by the urgency ordinance?
Three. We have, we have four more positions that are available. The problem is, like environmental health, is getting people hired with unsurety of where we're going with this.
Right, they don't know if they're going to have a job in a few months. That makes sense. And these are, and there are three in your MET team, if I understand correctly, right?
Correct, yeah.
And MET team's been working with code enforcement on this?
Yeah, and actually, we have a desk where code, code enforcement actually has one of their officers in our office upstairs with our MET team so that they're working hand-in-hand. So that they know, able to communicate a lot better than playing phone tag and email tag. So, it's working out a lot better.
Thank you very much.
There's also, if I can add one more thing. Getting into the, the grow season next year, I have every, if the UO is extended, I have every intention of bringing, bringing forth to the board the addition of two more positions, maybe. Those could be extra higher positions, or depending on, indeed, they could be full-time code positions.
Further questions from the board? I have a couple of issues I'd like to discuss. The issue of our fines per day in our existing program, will that be carried over to the new revised eight point oh-six?
I believe the fine is changed a bit. I'll bring an attorney up.
Good.
Sorry, Sarah Dekay, Deputy County Counsel. In general, yes, the fine structure for cannabis cultivation-related violations is in the urgency ordinance, right? It's in seventeen point nine-five, that's about thousand dollars per day per violation. That will be unchanged by this change. And with regard to non-cannabis cultivation, sort of general run-of-the-mill code violations, the fine structure goes up very slightly from the existing eight point oh-six. It's, it's essentially the maximum allowable by state law. It tracks the government code fine structure.
In the past, I've been informed that those fines are somewhat negotiable when trying to find an amicable solution to the violations. Does the new eight point oh-six- Does the new 8.06 make that a mandatory statute as far as the fine program and scheduling? And who has final authorization about whether or not that fine can be reduced or increased? Is that the administrative law judge, if you will?
The hearing officer will have, absolutely have the discretion to rule on the appropriateness of the fines that the code enforcement has imposed. And with regard to non-cannabis cultivation, I think code's goal is compliance. And so to the extent that those lesser fines, I do think that there is some amount of negotiation or adjustment depending on the alleged violator's efforts to come into compliance and the extent to which they are working with the code compliance department to get into compliance as quickly as possible. At the end of the day, this is property maintenance and public safety, and so I think the goal of the code, of Mike's department, is to get folks into compliance with state law and county code as quickly as possible.
And the funding, what activities, and it probably answers its own question, would those fines actually fund? Would that be code compliance? Okay, so that goes back into your self-sustaining systems as far as code compliance, correct?
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Hypothetical, when you come across an illegal grow, and we're looking to the future, and there's a lot of ifs here, and you find that that's a totally illegal grow with no registration, no application on file, and seeing that we recently passed Proposition C, the people did, is that cultivation tax come into play on that? In other words, is it applicable to an illegal grow with code compliance? And I'm asking a question I probably don't know the answer to. Counsel?
I'm not sure if I know the answer to that. I'll defer to Megan.
Would you please state the question again, please?
Okay, let's say we have, this is hypothetical, we'll say that Mr. Clapp has a grow, no offense. I do have one next door to me.
I'll second that.
Aye, back up.
We come across, code compliance comes across an illegal grow with no registration, and let's say it's a 5,000-square-foot grow, canopy size. And we abate that during our normal procedures through 8.06. Does Measure C, which taxes a cultivation of cannabis, have any influence or bearing on that particular illegal grow?
The illegal grow would be abated, so there'd be nothing to tax, because under this scheme, code compliance is looking for a streamlined way to abate noncompliant or illegal grows faster, so there isn't a grow there, once it's abated, obviously. Measure C funds would be, the tax, tax bills would go out to all of the registered and/or application pending registrants at the various times that they would normally go out to.
In my experience as a law enforcement officer, we would have direct lines to IRS and state franchise tax board for that type of income, be illegal or illegal. Thank you.
Well, since I'm in there, so if I sold my drugs, I would still be responsible for paying IRS tax on those drugs, or else I'd be going to prison for it.
Okay.
So that doesn't affect the growth of it, just the sales?
I ask a question, I didn't have the answer.
Okay.
Any further questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think that this is a great hammer to get rid of the bad guys. And I recognize it might impact Mr. Clapp's grow.
I'm sorry. I'm just worried about the press over here, what I'm worried about.
You know, we have really great imagery of every place in the county. But it really is a tool that I think is really going to move things along and help us get rid of some of the bad guys quickly. It's kind of a hammer that we need while still preserving people's civil rights and their rights as well, which I think is really important. So I imagine that, you know, if we had, how we'd pay for them, the funds can pay for enforcement of the non, excuse me, the urgency ordinance fees can pay for the eradication of the noncompliant growers who come under the urgency ordinance, but Measure C funds would have to be, which would cover in the future, for the law enforcement piece of it, correct? For criminal?
That's my understanding as far as Measure C goes. I can speak directly to the code compliance portion, but beyond that...
Thank you for bringing this forward.
And again, not to be redundant, but without an extension of the UO, there's zero funding or capability for any of this.
Any further questions from the board? Okay, I'll open this up to public comment.
My fellow Mount Branch, I'd like to ask a specific question of the board and code compliance. If the current 8.06 is replaced, this summer, can I call up code compliance, board members, and inform them that the grow a quarter mile from me has been denied under appeal in front of the planning commission and the board? It was probably the first one denied. And they continued to grow last summer, they harvested. Now they're preparing for this spring's grow. I hear equipment backup horns all day long that have been denied by the planning commission and the board. If I call code compliance in the spring, when I see the dirt going up the road, is someone going to come abate that project that has been denied by you? 8.06, the new 8.06.
Ladies and gentlemen, how many people intend to speak on this issue from the public? Let's see a raise of hands. Okay, all right. And we're going to document the questions, and hopefully we can get those answered. This is an agendized item specific. Mr. McManus, go ahead.
Thank you. As I understand it, Measure C is a tax that is kind of initiated by the application for grow permits and whatnot. Whether it is or not, does it make any difference? Right now, you've got two groups of people out there that either have applications in or they don't, and very little seems to be done to move them along or abate them or anything else. I don't know why the tax collection process would be any easier if you don't know who they are, even if you do know who they are. Are we going to now have to beef up the tax collector's office to get all this done? If you were to get some additional money on Measure C, it's my understanding that's a general tax. And what I hear from the panel and everyone else is, well, we need to get some Measure C money, or will I be charged to get the Measure C account? It's not the same as the registration account. You can buy new buses with Measure C. You can use all of it to fund law enforcement if you want. You can spend that money any way you want or not spend it. That's entirely up to the board. So there's no automatic reach-in to the treasure chest of Measure C money based on whether the marijuana program is succeeding or failing, whether more growers are complying or not complying. It's entirely up to this board. So you will have control over that money. It's not pre-allocated like the application fund, which has severe restrictions on it, which probably should be looked at to see if maybe that money can be accessible from marijuana-related general fund expenses that normally wouldn't be, have been incurred if we didn't have it in our county. Thank you.
Perhaps? Mr. Edson?
Morning. Cliff Edson, San Andreas. 8.06 is absolutely necessary to, this is a question, to speed up the process. And I believe that, didn't we try to bring this up for the past six months to speed up the process and hasn't it been delayed? I don't know why, but from, going from three months to 17 to 21 days for an abatement process would definitely deter many of the folks that would take advantage, would it not, to take advantage of the system? I think it would. So also, I believe that Supervisor Tofanelli had a concern about, you know, making 8.06 across the board instead of just cannabis. I believe that our current system for our code enforcement, as far as 8.06 goes around property, railroad property stuff, I think that's a pretty good idea, actually, to keep it that way, because I believe the supervisors need be engaged in that portion of it. But as far as what I can see, the, I guess the question would be, is this the right thing to do to speed up the process to get rid of the folks that don't want to follow the rules? That would be the question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
Ben Stoppard, District 5. I'm fully for expediting the process. In the past, building department permit fees and compliance fines prior to 2006 fully funded the building department code compliance. After the recession and everything, that fell through the bottom, as with many of the other departments. You, Mr. Olivera and Mr. Garamendi, did ask some of the right questions as pertaining to mine, but with this system going through an administrative hearing court and possibly moving on to a superior court, what does the superior court want for being on an appeal that they're hearing at that point? Will that dip into our funds also? We know what the administrative court judge would cost, but will there be a further cost when it comes to the superior court if it moves on to that through the appeal process? That would also drain off our funds. Good question to ask.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. I understand Mr. McManus, in his comments to the board, indicated the Measure C, Proposition C, if you will, funds that's designated to the general fund, I understand, and he's absolutely correct. That could be used for anything involved in the county's business and is controlled by the board of supervisors. So he's correct on that. On the court costs, I'm going to defer to county council. Maybe you can comment on that, and that's Mr. Stoppard's comments.
Anytime any action is challenged or a cause of action is brought to a superior court, the county has to defend it. That is something that is above and beyond any kind of appeal fee. That's standard across the board. So even now, when any action is brought to the board and it is challenged in court, whether it is a project that is denied by the planning commission and then the board denies it, it can be ridded to the superior court. The county still has the burden of defending the county's action. That is outside of any funding source through an appeal fee or anything else. That is just something that the county is responsible for providing its own defense to. So yes, there are expenses for any action that is brought to the superior court against the county.
Thank you, counsel. That answers the questions I had documented. Any board member?
I would like to follow up on the question from Mr. Faubel. This summer, when people have been denied their application and you know it, and your neighbors are over the hill, and we call in, will this tool be part of helping fund, get rid of those bad actors?
So this is the direct purpose of the rewrite of this code. The county, in my department, we're extremely frustrated. We're getting these calls, what are you doing about it? What are you doing about it? What are you doing about it? And it's, well, we're waiting for appeal number two. We're waiting for the decision from this. We're waiting for that. So our response to the citizenry was totally unacceptable, and that, in a large, large part, was due to our current enforcement system and our code. So I firmly believe that the adoption of this new 8.06, it's still a numbers game. If you have 500 sites that need to be abated, some are going to be at the beginning of the year, some are going to be at the end. But I firmly believe we will get to a huge majority with this new tool. It's just mathematics. The appeals process is slowed down, the abatement process gets rolling right away. So if there's some other failure, then it would be my failure, failure of my department.
So those calls are good, are code?
In my opinion. Thank you.
Go ahead, counsel.
Board chair, I just wanted to remind the board that this is an introduction and reading, and first reading of the ordinance. So if it is passed forward for adoption, it would come back to, at a future board date for adoption, and it wouldn't go into effect until 30 days later. So whenever that happens, obviously, 30 days after it's adopted is when code could actually start utilizing the language of this new 8.06 and abatements.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Renner, I do have one question. I apologize to Mr. McVey. I didn't document your question, but I know what it is. It was brought up in public comment, how long would it take under this new program for CC to respond to a property once a complaint's made?
That's still dependent on what our backlog is. If we have six people and we get 200 calls in one day, it's going to delay the response. What my thought is, is that within a two-week timeframe, we would be out there and the abatement would then, if the nuisance was so found, the abatement would start moving. The abatement would be finished within 17 days. So soup to nuts, and that's extreme. I think in reality, it can be a few days we can be out there, because once the grow season really ends, most of my officers will be mobilized in that capacity anyway.
All right. Any further, board? Thank you, Mr. Renner. Any further public comment? And I'll bring it back to the board. I'll entertain a motion on item number 23.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Tofanelli.
Board chair.
Yes, counsel.
Before you take a vote, I did want to clarify, if the board would also include in the motion a publication of a summary of the ordinance, so staff doesn't have to publish the entire ordinance, it does save staff resources and money in actually publishing the entire ordinance. If the board directs staff and authorizes staff to publish a summary of it, that is an alternative, and I would ask that the board consider that.
Needs to modify his motion.
Yeah, I was going to ask Supervisor Tofanelli to accept that nomination, and I mean, you accept that modification to your original motion?
Yes.
Do I understand the modification?
Yes.
Seconded, I believe you did. Supervisor Mills, you understand the modification?
Yes, sir.
Any question on the modification? Then I will entertain a vote. Indicate your approval of the motion by saying aye.
Aye.
Indicate your disapproval by saying no. Motion passes, five, zero, unanimous.
Item 24 is from the board supervisors to appoint, appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas.
Chair, I would like to pull the library commission from the agenda so that I can recuse myself for only that item on the appointments.
Any comments from the board on that?
Just step out on that one.
I would step out on that one only.
The chair has no...
If you want to do that one first, then I'll step out on that one.
Yeah, that would be funny.
Okay, so for the library commission, we have two vacancies for terms expiring 12/31/2020. We have received four applications. Applications have been received from Bob Dean, who has been an incumbent on the library commission, from Vicki Mills, Margaret Williams, and Allison Wright. So the board chooses to select two, to fill the two vacancies.
Comments from the board?
I'd like to nominate, Mr. Chair.
I'd like to nominate, Mr. Chair, permission, I'd like to nominate Bob Dean. He's currently, I believe, chairing the commission, and he's clearly dedicated to libraries.
Okay. Do we need a second on the nomination, Council, or just nominations as a general?
However you would like to do it is okay with me.
Okay, let's go on nominations only at this time. Any other nominations for the Library Board?
I'm going to, the board's going to request a couple of seconds here to review.
So Margaret Williams is from District 2, and Allison Wright is from District 1. Does that help at all?
Bob is in District 2 also.
Yes, Bob is from District 2, and Vicky Mills is from District 4.
How many people sit on that board, Madam?
Seven.
Seven. Are all districts being represented on the board?
It is not a district-appointed position.
I understand. But on the sitting members?
I couldn't tell you because it's not district-specific.
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Allison Wright.
Thank you, Supervisor Tofanelli.
Contacted me and asked.
Okay. We have two candidates, Bob Dean and, I'm sorry, name again.
Allison Wright.
Allison Wright, Ms. Wright. Any further nominations? Okay, nominations are closed at this time. Hearing no public comment? I'd call for a vote on these two candidates for the Library Commission. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed by no.
Wait, wait, wait. So you have two nominations, you don't have a motion nor a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I moved it. I moved it.
We have one now.
And you have a second.
Supervisor Clapp has made the motion to accept these two nominations for the two own positions. Seconded by Supervisor Tofanelli. Public comment. I'll bring it back to the board for the vote. Indicate your acceptance of these two nominees to fill the positions by indicating aye.
Aye.
All opposed by no. Motion carries, 4, 0, 1 abstaining.
One absent.
One absent, okay.
Supervisor Clapp, would you mind telling Supervisor Mills that he can come back?
Yeah, we can bring him back. Ladies and gentlemen, while Supervisor Mills returns to the chamber, we're going to be taking a lunch break at 12 o'clock, and we'll be returning at 1:30.
Okay, so moving right along, the Agriculture Advisory Committee has three vacancies. We have received five applications. This is a district-specific appointment, so we have one vacancy in District 1, one in District 2, and one in District 5. All appointments expire on December 31, 2019. In District 1, Francisca Chabron and Libby Raider-Cassick have applied. In District 2, Doug Josies, who is an incumbent on the Agriculture Advisory Committee, and Margaret Williams have applied. And in District 5, John Robey, who is an incumbent, has applied.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Comments from the board? Any nominations?
Mr. Chair, I would nominate Lyndra Raider-Cassick for District 1.
Mr. Chair, I'd nominate Doug Josie for District 2.
Any further nominations?
I'll keep mine.
Pardon?
I'll keep the incumbent.
You'll keep the incumbent?
So we're going to act on all of these as one?
As one?
Okay.
Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the board, entertain a motion to accept these.
No, no, no. No, we're going to use all of the rest of the appointments in one swoop. One vote. Okay. Next is the Children's and Families Commission for Spive Calaveras. There are two vacancies. One is for a special ed early intervention person, and the term expires 12/31/2019. Tricia Simmons is the incumbent and has re-applied. The second is for a recipient of project services, again, expiring 12/31/2019. Stephanie Zeno is the incumbent, and she has applied as well. Is there any objection to these two?
Board, any objections? Public comment? Okay, Madam Clerk.
The Commission on Aging has two vacancies that have received application. One is for District 4, one is for District 5, so you need to select one for each. Two applications were received for District 4, one from Carrie Steffi, and one from Elizabeth Thompson, and one from District 5, that's Linda Mellon.
I would appoint Elizabeth Thompson.
Any further appointees or nominees from the board?
Linda Mellon.
Linda Mellon?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Supervisor Clapp. Public comment on those individuals?
The next is for County Service Area 1, Rancho Calaveras. There are two vacancies, and we have received three applications. One is from Charles Ferrucci, one is from David Rayner, and one is from Darren Spellman. You need to select two.
Any nominee by the board?
I'd like David Rayner and Spellman.
I'm sorry, who's that?
I'd like to have Rayner and Spellman.
Rayner and Spellman. Any further nominations? Public comment? Bring it back to the board. Madam, that's all we have, Madam Clerk?
No, we have lots more.
We have more?
We have lots more. County Service Area 8, Spring Hills, there is one vacancy and one applicant. William Hamilton is the incumbent and has re-applied.
Okay. Any comment from the board? Public comment? Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay. The Fish and Game Commission, there are two vacancies that have received application. One is for District 3, and one is for District 4. The District 3 applicant is Ronald Severud. The District 4 applicant is Elaine St. John.
Do we have any information on this Ronald Severud guy?
Maybe a little.
I would nominate Mr. Severud for the Fish and Game Commission.
And I would nominate Elaine St. John.
Okay, thank you. Next, for the IHSS Advisory Committee, there is a vacancy for a general public member, and we received one application, and that's from Margaret Williams.
Board comments on Ms. Williams? Public comment? Bring it back to the board. Madam Clerk.
Okay. The next is for Murphy Cemetery District. There is a vacancy that has received one application, and that's from Jeff St. Louis, who is an incumbent.
It's your area.
There are several vacancies.
I was going to say, how many vacancies are there?
There are three.
And?
We have received one application.
And we have one application submitted?
We have another application that did not meet the deadline for this agenda, so it will be considered at the next meeting.
Okay. I would recommend that we keep the application on file for that position, the one position, pending or future meeting with the other application.
Okay.
Any comment by the board? Any comment, public, public comment? Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Next is for the Prevent Child Abuse Council. There is a vacancy for an alternate, and Christina Nielsen has applied.
Comments from the board? Public comment? Madam Clerk.
Next is for the Public Educational and Governmental Television Commission, PAG-TV. There are two vacancies. And we, one for District 3 and one for District 4. Pamela Quile from District 3 is the incumbent, and Alvin Brolio has applied for the District 4 position.
Board comments? I'm good with the selection of Ms. Quiles for District 3.
And I would nominate Mr. Brolio.
Public comment? Thank you.
We're getting close.
Madam Clerk.
Railroad Flat Cemetery District. We have a vacancy and an application for one member, and the application is from Margaret Williams.
More comments? Supervisor Guaramendi says thumbs up.
San Andreas Cemetery District, there is a vacancy and one application for a member, and Jack Talia has applied.
Board members, any comment?
I'm fine with Jack.
Public comment? Madam Clerk.
The last one is the Solid Waste Task Force. There is a vacancy for a solid waste industry representative. Mark Zion is the incumbent and has re-applied.
Board comments?
I would approve.
Other comment? Thank you. Madam Clerk, before we go further, is there any other committees that we have applications with openings with?
There are always vacancies, and...
I understand. How many applications do we have? Do we know? How about the Appeals Assessment Board? Is there, there's an opening on that?
There is. There has been for more than a year, and I have not received any applications for that.
You haven't?
No, I have not. If it was mailed, I was not here yesterday, did not receive yesterday's mail yet.
I believe it was forwarded by, we'll discuss that later, another date. Just going back to the agenda item, we'll need a motion to approve all the appointments and nominees at this time. I would entertain that motion.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Tofanelli moves. I'll need a second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Clapp. We've already had public comment period on this. I'll call for a vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying no. Motion carries, 5-0.
Item 25 is to, from the Board of Supervisors, to reassign members of the Board of Supervisors to various committees, commissions, and boards pursuant to FPPC Regulation 18705.5 to CCR Section 18705.5. Since these appointments were made at the January 24 meeting, there have been two situations that have come up. One is, we had some discussion regarding the Calaveras' Amador-MacAlmy River Authority. We didn't understand why we would need two alternates. We don't, we need two representatives and one alternate. So Supervisor Guaramendi had been assigned as the primary board rep, and Supervisor Mills had been assigned as the alternate. Based on that, I would ask if Supervisor Mills would be the second representative, and if another alternate would be selected.
indicating, shaking her head, yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, Supervisor Mills has agreed to that assignment.
So we would need an alternate.
Thank you, Supervisor Tofanelli.
The other matter is the IHSS Advisory Committee. Supervisor Guaramendi was assigned as the representative, and I believe there is a conflict that has come up, scheduling conflict, and so Supervisor Tofanelli is the alternate. My understanding is that Supervisor Tofanelli would like to remain the alternate.
Yes.
So we would need to select another representative.
I was taking that.
I nominate Supervisor Clapp.
Thank you, thank you for that.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
I would second that.
So is that the motion for both assignments?
There's a motion for both assignments there. Public comment on that? Seeing no public comment, bring it back to the board. Any board comments?
Thank you for stepping up.
Yeah, I would move, Mr. Chair, just to formally, we need a second.
Okay. Looking for a second?
I will second that.
Supervisor Mills would, will be seconding that. Once again, no public comment on that. I'll call for a vote, indicate by saying aye, your approval of this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, 5-0.
The next item is Item 25, and it is also from the Board of Supervisors to reassign members, what was compared to that one?
26. 26.
I didn't check one. Okay. Number 26, Board of Supervisors, approve the Calaveras' Child Care Council membership as recommended by the Calaveras' Child Care Council.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is there a representative from Child, the Child Care Council?
Good morning. My name is Kelly Gresh, and I'm the representative from the Calaveras' Child Care Council. And the council is a public committee that reviews and makes recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. When our bylaws were approved many, many years ago, the way our membership works is we do the recruitment, just as we do most of the public councils through the newspaper and other means, and we accept those applications, we review them, and then we make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. You are responsible for 50% of the membership, and then the county superintendent of schools is responsible for 50% of the membership. What you have in front of you today is one membership application that we have received. There were three applications that we received this year. Two were approved by the county superintendent of schools, and you have one before you, and that is Linda Wynn from the Police and Health Department.
Any board comments, questions? Open this up to public comment. Any public comment? Okay, bring it back to the board. I'll entertain a motion on item 26. So moved? Moved by Supervisor Guaramendi. Second request? Any second?
I'll second.
Second by Supervisor Tofanelli. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying no. Motion carries, 5-0 unanimous. Madam Clerk, before we proceed to item number 28.
27.
27. I made the same mistake.
Do we have to possibly go to lunch early and then?
I was considering that. Would the board object if we took an early lunch and be back here at 20 after 1:00, so we can get started on the next agenda item? Okay, we are adjourned for lunch. We'll reconvene at 1:20.